Welcome.
Trustee Markfart. Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Takaka.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Schink.
Here.
President Byrne.
Good. Will anybody please stand for the plug to hear this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic under its standing, one nation, under God, in the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
The ladies and gentlemen, who wish to address the board?
Chris Meyer, 371 Cherry Valley Road, Vernon Hills. And I am here with the age-old problem I've been fighting for over a year and a half.
With the backyard and the fence and the...
The backyard, the fence from Abbott.
Yeah.
I was at the meeting at Long Grove last week. They said they had talked to you all, or the village manager, I believe. And I keep getting the runaround, and nobody does anything. Long Grove came out to my house, the village manager and the village engineer. They looked at the fence, they agree it's falling apart, it's decrepit, it's not fixable. Also, the berm that's behind there is put up without a permit, it's not up to code, and nobody can mow it. It's full of buckthorn and wattle and all kinds of invasive species. I'm at my wit's end. It's going to cost a couple of thousand dollars to repair that fence behind my house. If I go and get it done myself, take it to lawyers, it's going to cost a lot more than that. And I'm at my wit's end. I need help from somebody.
Who's, have we, the jurisdiction that it falls under is...
The fence belongs to Abbott Farm.
I believe Director Brown had been working on this issue for quite some time. And perhaps I could ask Director Venata to meet you after the meeting or share contact information. We can get in touch with you and see if we can pick this up.
Is it going to do any good?
Well, we can, we can visit the site and maybe revisit the issue and see what options we have.
Okay. Hopefully, it'll get fixed this time because it's falling apart. Thank you.
Thank you. There are motion to appoint Trustee Cook Chairman Pro Tem.
I move to appoint Trustee Cook to be Chairman Pro Tem for the duration of the meeting.
I second.
Roll call.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schink.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Okay, one second. First item under the president's report, we have some representatives from the city of Highland Park. Mayor Nancy Roderick, City Manager Gita Newkirk, and Chief of Police Lou Jogman. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. We are honored and delighted to be with you this evening. Today, we stand before you humbled and grateful for the incredible support and assistance that each of you and your community have shown to us in the wake of the Highland Park shooting. It was the darkest day in the history of Highland Park, and the shooting shook us to our core. Yet amid chaos and despair, we experienced something remarkable. Communities like Vernon Hills came together to help. On behalf of the city of Highland Park and so many survivors, we thank you. We are grateful to every individual who offered a helping hand, a listening ear, or words of encouragement in the days and months that followed the tragedy. The kindness, the professionalism, and the solidarity that we experienced from all of you and your team gives us hope and reminds us of the power of community. Every act of kindness made a tremendous difference. You showed us that we are not alone in our grief and that we have a network of people who care deeply about each of us. We will continue to lean on each other as we work together to solve shared problems and achieve common goals.
As local government professionals, emergency preparedness is part of our routine. While crises are rare, we prepare individually, with our respective organizations, and with our regional partners. On that horrific day last year, our team in Highland Park and the brave men and women of Vernon Hills and the region, including our county and state partners, responded swiftly, effectively, confidently, and in a coordinated manner. We are so incredibly grateful for your support, the heroic actions and sacrifices made. The actions, professionalism, and the courage of your team in Vernon Hills will be forever remembered.
On behalf of the city of Highland Park, please accept a few tokens of our appreciation and recognition of our partnership and your unwavering support for Highland Park. To each of the responding officers, we will be presenting a letter of appreciation along with a challenge coin, which was custom designed by our staff to recognize all of the efforts involved. We had over eighteen hundred people respond to assist us and a number of organizations that just went above and beyond. Vernon Hills is one of those organizations. The coin that I have here specifically lists and recognizes a limited number of those that provide enhanced assistance on the day of and in the days after the incident. Vernon Hills is memorialized on the coin for their assistance during the immediate response, securing the scene in the days after, and for helping to patrol the streets of Highland Park so our officers could take one recovery day off. We also present the city of Highland Park flag, which has flown half-staffed over the city in recognition of your bravery, sacrifice, and your support. And it reads, "Certificate of Appreciation. The city of Highland Park recognizes the Vernon Hills Police Department for their assistance and support during the city of Highland Park's critical incident response to the mass casualty shooting on July 4, 2022. The VHPD and its members played a crucial role in the initial response and subsequent recovery efforts, including Chief Kreese's assistance at the command post and providing shift coverage for the much-needed HPPD Officer Wellness Days. The accompanying flag was flown in Highland Park in honor of your service and in great appreciation of your contributions. The city of Highland Park will be forever grateful to the Vernon Hills Police Department and to its members." Finally, I would like to express my profound gratitude to Chief Pat Kreese. Without hesitation and even before a request could be made, Chief Kreese immediately responded to the Emergency Operations Center and spent the day specifically assisting me as we managed this incident and in the days and weeks that followed. And in fact, the role he assumed is now being looked at to become the standard in future critical incidents. We are forever grateful to Chief Kreese, to the members of the Vernon Hills PD, and to your entire organization for your support and your assistance. Thank you very, very much.
All right, now we're going to call our officers. So let me, first of all, let me get on the microphone for just a minute and just recognize our entire staff because, you know, that day we had about half of the Vernon Hills Police Department, more than half of the Vernon Hills Police Department, working the parade. And like so many things start public safety, this started with a sharp telecommunicator being coming aware of a crisis in Highland Park and got the message to the boss. The boss called me and immediately then deployed everyone she could. So the men and women that actually went to Vernon Hills are representative of the entire team, and we're happy to have them here so that Chief Jogman can thank them personally. So come up here, please, and let's just form a line, perhaps.
Go. So this has been a long time coming. You can actually, you know, going through what we went through, there are a lot of unknowns, and at times felt like we were putting the plane together as we were flying it. But I have to say, on the forefront of our mind was always to come here and to thank you for what you did. It's so very, very important to us to make sure that you know that there was no way we would have made it through that day without each and every one of you. So it's been very important for us to get here. It's taken some time. We've tried to follow the kind of the guidance of the DOJ and how long we go, you know, through this process. But please know that our delay in getting here in no way signifies our lack of appreciation. We are so, so grateful and honored to be here today to shake each one of your hands and to thank you. You're phenomenal. You represented your department unbelievably, and you really, truly helped our community and treated our community like it was your own. I'm especially grateful, and I have to share, which you don't know, is when your entire police department works an event like this, you kind of run out of people to cover the street. And we don't have anything in place in law enforcement to backfill our, our department. So when I was desperately trying to give my officers some much-needed time off after going through what they went through, I worked with Chief Kreese and a couple other area departments, and he had his officers come to Highland Park and work patrol to cover our street so that our officers could have one day off, just one day. So we are tremendously grateful to you and to your team for that. So thank you.
Of course. Now, you know, it goes without saying that we did not have a lack of volunteers for those assignments. So every time we asked, we just had men and women stand up and say, "We want to go help." So. All right. We are going to, we're going to remain in council chambers for just the very next item because I think it's just too appropriate, it would be inappropriate for us to walk out. But then we're going to ask everybody that's here for this ceremony to join us for a brief reception. But there is one more item on the agenda that we'd like to stay for. Thank you.
That, that item, and it is, it fits together very well, is the Village President's proclamation declaring the first Friday of June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the village of Vernon Hills, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to end this public health crisis. Every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year. Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. In Illinois, there are 1,622 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 12.9 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state 186 billion each year, of which 625.5 million is paid by the taxpayers. Illinois has the 35th highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. Gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in the cities, with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. Cities across the nation, including in Vernon Hills, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. Protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility. Support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Mayors and law enforcement officers, in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources, know their communities best, are the most familiar with community local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. Gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and increase in city gun violence. In January 2013, Hadea Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at the age of 15. And on June 2, 2023, to recognize the 26th birthday of Hadea Pendleton, born June 2, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadea Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. The idea was inspired by a group of Hadea's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. Anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2, the first Friday of June 2023, to help raise awareness about gun violence. By wearing orange on June 2, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. We renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them, and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore be it resolved that President Byrne of the village of Vernon Hills declares the first Friday of June, June 2, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and encourages all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. So this goes hand in hand with our great officers and everything we've been saying. So please. Did any board members want to make a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. So, you know, part of this was, you know, sort of facilitated by someone in the community, if you recall, who sent us an email, Elise Hopman. Why don't you raise your hand here? She's one of the young ladies in the red t-shirts over there, so.
I was just going to ask.
Yeah.
Did you want to come up?
Yeah, Elise, you want to come up? I mean, you, you started, you know, you sent the email and to the board, you know, acknowledging that we should absolutely do this, so.
We are grateful. There's this group of us over here this evening, and I literally just got off a bus from Springfield. There were 500 of us trying to persuade state legislators today to protect the Second Amendment and protect the citizens around our state. And I just want to express gratitude on behalf of my peers here and the 2,800 members of the Vernon Hills Buffalo Grove area Moms Demand Action members and other friends just looking to support our families and keep our communities safe. We're grateful for all of you for being role models and leaders. We're grateful to our police department. They were just at my block a week ago, and there was an incident, and I'm grateful for all of you. Thank you for the good work, and we really do appreciate everything that you do and continue hoping to work in partnership to keep everybody safe. Thank you.
And thank you for bringing us here. Any other comments from the board or chief or no? Okay, then we'll take a moment to let the people who were heading downstairs go, and then we will continue. John. He's wanting to give her the card.
I don't know, Jim.
It's, it's not our, it's a private fence. It's not her property. I mean, property, is it her fence or Abbott's?
Okay. Do you want to get it? Okay, next item on our agenda is 2023 Public Works Week. Connecting the World. Public Works connects all of us. Whether it's through infrastructure or first responder services, public works professionals always enhance the lives of the communities they serve. Public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. The support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, highways, public buildings, solid waste collection, and snow removal. The quality of and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore Roger Byrne, President of the village of Vernon Hills, hereby proclaims the week of May 21 through 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week in the village of Vernon Hills, and calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the problems involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Dated this 16th May, 16th day of May 2023. Yeah, public works, I mean, one of the things I've always set up here is we sit up here and come up with all kinds of great ideas, and then somebody has to do it. And a lot of times, it's public works, most of the time, in fact, it's public works, that has to go out and do the, the hard work involved in all of our events and all of the stuff that gets planned. And can't say enough about how great our public works department is here in Vernon Hills. Really can't. So Public Works Week. Okay. Tonight, by the way, is proclamation night. Let me, I'll do this one and then, okay. This one, we, when we did police a couple of weeks ago, I was reminded that, about the next day, that May 4 was actually International Firefighters' Day. So we are actually kind of going back a little bit in this. Village President's proclamation of International Firefighters' Day, May 4, 2023. International Firefighters' Day is observed on the 4th of May each year. While efforts to fight fires have been around for over two millennia, International Firefighters' Day was first celebrated May 4, 1999. International Firefighters' Day provides an opportunity to honor and recognize the services and sacrifices that firefighters make to ensure that their communities are as safe as possible. This day allows us to recognize the organized efforts of all who protect both life and property, to honor those who fight urban fires as well as those who work to protect the wilderness. This day allows us to salute all in the emergency fire service, from emergency medical technicians, heavy equipment operators, fire prevention specialists, to hazardous material specialists, including those who get paid and those who are volunteers. This day allows us to honor both past and current firefighters, including those who made the ultimate sacrifice. We thank all for their service. Now therefore Roger Byrne, President of the village of Vernon Hills, calls upon all citizens to encourage all citizens to recognize not only our local firefighters, but those worldwide on May 4 and year-round for their courage, selfless service, and sacrifice. Dated this 16th May. Yeah, there, the other thing, we've talked about first responders. As I always say, you know, we do fire drills at school, and when that alarm goes off, we try to get out of the building as fast as we can. Firefighters go in, and that takes, you know, an incredible group of people. And firefighters and fire medics and all the first responders are just amazing people. We thank them. Your turn?
Okay. So I appreciate the opportunity to read this proclamation. I've, I'm actually, before I actually read it, I'm going to share with you a little family history here. I'm second generation. My mother, my grandparents were from Japan outside of Hiroshima. My mother was born in California, and I was born in Denver, and my father was born and raised in Honolulu, Hawaii. A little history, so if you recall, in 1942, when the Japanese bombed Pearl Harbor, they, my, my grandparents and my mother's family, my mom, well, my mom is the youngest of nine, she'll be 86 this May, but they were lettuce farmers right outside Sacramento. And then when, you know, when Pearl Harbor was bombed, then all the Japanese that were here were, you know, placed in internment camps. They weren't camps where they were physically abused, but, but, you know, what, at the end of the day, their land was taken, their farm equipment was taken. Yes, there was reparations in 1983, I believe Senator Anoy out of Hawaii. You know, everyone in that internment camp was compensated, you know, during that time period. My mother was five years old at the time, and they spent three and a half years in a camp called Tulley Lake, Tulley Lake in Colorado. They had a choice to be in California, Nevada, or Colorado. So I just want to say that, you know, I do appreciate, you know, based upon my family background, to be able to read this proclamation here. Furthermore, we know this community is 25% Asian, and what Asian is inclusive is Indian, you know, Japanese, Chinese, Korean, anyone from the Asian, you know, area is considered Asian. So we have a very strong population here as well. So with that, I will read the proclamation. Thank you very much. Proclamation, recognition, and celebration. recognition and celebration of Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 2023, Vernon Hills, Lake County, Illinois. Whereas the Village of Vernon Hills is a welcoming and inclusive community that recognizes and celebrates all people, cultures, and heritage. Whereas the Village of Vernon Hills is home to extremely strong and vibrant community of people who identify and celebrate Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander heritage. Whereas in 1992, the nation officially designated May as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas, whereas May was chosen to commemorate the first Japanese people who came to this country in May of 1843 and to, and to the May of 1869 completion of the Transcontinental Railroad, which involved the labor of many Chinese immigrants. Whereas the village joins with the entire nation in recognizing that the Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander community is made up of a culturally and linguistically diverse people representing populations from many countries and islands. And whereas the Village of Vernon Hills celebrates the diversity of cultures, breadth of achievement, and remarkable contributions of these communities. Now therefore, be it resolved by the President and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Vernon Hills, that May is hereby proclaimed and recognized as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the Village of Vernon Hills. Be it further resolved, that is, that it is encouraged that all members of the Vernon Hills community join in recognizing, celebrating, and honoring the American, the Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander community. Proclaimed this 16th day of May 2023. Signed, Roger L. Byrne, Village President. So, oh, one, just also as, as, you know, as a side note, yes, my grandfather, he came over here in 1900 as well. And yeah, it's a long family history here. So I appreciate the opportunity to read this tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, Planning and Zoning Commission Appointment.
Yes, good evening. This past April, the Planning and Zoning Commissioner Jeff Mulcrone announced his resignation from the commission, creating a new vacancy. As you may recall, early this year, the village sought applications from Vernon Hills residents with interest in serving their community on the village's Planning and Zoning Commission. In total, the village received four applications. One of the four applicants was Mr. Brian Fluno. After review and consideration, President Byrne has recommended the appointment of Mr. Fluno to fill the Planning and Zoning Commission vacancy. Mr. Fluno is a 22-year resident of Vernon Hills and has a professional background as a landscape architect. Mr. Fluno has also previously served his community as a Boy Scout leader and as a neighborhood HOA president in Greg's Landing. If there are no questions or discussions, staff is looking for a motion to approve the appointment of Brian Fluno to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Is there a motion to that extent? So move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Protemco.
Aye. Motion carries.
All right, I'd like to invite Mr. Fluno up to the podium with me, please. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Brian Fluno.
I, Brian Fluno.
Having been appointed to the position of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
Having been appointed to the position of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
In the Village of Vernon Hills.
In the Village of Vernon Hills.
In the County of Lake.
In the County of Lake.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And you're welcome to say something if you'd like, but you don't. Okay.
Just being in Vernon Hills since the early days of Greg's Landing and being on board at Pinehurst and the board at Oakmont, and now I'm in my third neighborhood in Greg's Landing. So I've gone through a lot of sitting in the crowd of these meetings and just appreciate the opportunity to lend my expertise to the commission. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate having you. Okay. Next item, Village Manager.
Yes, we have an update this evening. We have some representatives from the Vernon Hills Park District, President David Doraffer, Commissioner Bruce Robbins, and Executive Director Jeff Fujuru to share some information on the upcoming spray ground project.
Thank you. David Doraffer, President of Vernon Hills Park District. Bruce Robbins, Jeff Fujuru, we are here essentially just to say thank you. Last month, you were generous in helping us fulfill our dream of providing the community with the type of spray ground we would like to provide. And unfortunately, due to the high escalation of costs these days, it came in over budget and we are here to say thank you for filling that gap with us and allowing us to provide this amenity to the community. It's a 7, 7,500 square foot amenity that will take care of children from anywhere from age two to teenager. Hold up to 200 children at one time on this amenity. So this is a huge opportunity for us in the community and we are here essentially just to say thank you for your support. Thank you for your partnership and we really appreciate all of you.
Just want to say, you know, with the help of your contribution, as you can see from the renderings, you're going to help us build one of the best spray grounds in the, in the northern Illinois community. And again, thank you.
Do you have a timeline on this or?
We will be opening by May of next year. This is basically one year from today. As soon as the pool shuts down, we'll start construction. We'll be filling in the Lazy River and this will take place of the Lazy River. And we should be go, ready to open first warm weather in May of 2024.
Okay. Good. Look forward to it.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
I have a question. Will it use less water than the Lazy River?
I'm sorry?
Will it use less water?
It'll use significantly less water than the Lazy River. Yeah. The Lazy River was losing, with the cracks and everything, it was losing a lot of water. It's a significant savings from a water conservation from lifeguards. It used to take seven lifeguards to take care of watching the Lazy River. We need, now need one lifeguard for this entire facility. So this is a huge amenity for a much broader audience. We'll be able to open it in May before the pool actually opens, since we don't need a large staff to watch it. And when we get those hot September and October days, we'll be able just to, on the flip of the switch, be able to open it up and get it going. So.
The slide, how many slides, how many slides are there?
There are currently three slides. We'll go down to two. We lose the one that feeds into the existing Lazy River.
That's okay.
Which is the double, the double tube side. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you all again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Assistant Village Manager.
Good evening. As we approach Memorial Day, we've invited Todd Renahan, Commander of American Legion Post 1247, and John Taylor to join us on two topics. The first topic is the Veterans Memorial Dedication Plaque, and the second topic will be Memorial Day events. As we all know, the village created the Arbor Theater and Veterans Memorial in the fall of 1995. This site was intended to be a public amenity, complete with a water feature, pavilion, and it was constructed to allow musical events and entertainment that can be enjoyed throughout the warmer months. The site serves as a beautiful public gathering place to meet family and friends. And the site is a special habitat for trees and native plants to flourish. The site is also a place to honor those who served in the U.S. Armed Forces. On May 26, 1996, a ceremony was conducted to formally open the Veterans Memorial. Music was provided by Stevenson High School. And you'll see that back in the day, Chicagoland TV was even present to cover the event. There was even a flyover by a P-51 Mustang that served in World War II that was piloted by a Liberty Ville resident named Steve Bolander. One of our residents, Craig Warner, was the master of ceremony. I believe that's him, the taller gentleman with the silver hair on the left. And our own Mayor Byrne, featured center there, was there to help break in the ceremony. Members of the Legion recently noted that the dedication plaque was not at this public site. And last year, they approached this board and asked if a dedication plaque could be prepared. This is the way the plaque has been placed in the Arbor Theater. And as you can see the inscription, it features the five seals from the U.S. Armed Forces and reads, "This memorial is dedicated to those who served in the, served in the Armed Forces of the United States of America," with the dedication date of May 26, 1996. Earlier this year, staff from Public Works met with the American Legion at the site. They came up with this plaque. And I'm now going to turn it over to Chris, who's going to talk about some of the more enhancements going on at this location as we prepare for Memorial Day.
Our Public Works staff is working hard to, to really improve the Arbor Theater here. We're going to be paving the parking lot. As you all know, we actually, we also added lighting in the area to the plaque so it can be illuminated as, as well as enhancing some of the landscaping around the area. So the guys are really working hard to get everything set up for Memorial Day.
Thank you, Chris. And you guys want to step up and then you can talk about the events as well, or the comments on how we came to this plaque?
Thank you, trustees. I'm Todd Renahan, Post Commander of American Legion Post 1247. John Taylor, my Vice Commander. Again, thank you last week for the, seeing the banners that we have up. It's, it's one thing to see it on paper and then it's another thing to, good thing the police aren't here, but you're driving down the road and you freak out and do a U-turn and run people off the road. Not really, but it was pretty shocking to see, wow, this is really neat. One after the other, after the other. But we've got Memorial Day coming up. And on the Friday before Memorial Day, we place flags at the markers at the Vernon Township Cemetery. It's the northeast corner of Milwaukee and 45, behind Eddie Merleau's and the bigger place back there. So we do that at, on that Friday before. That's at 10 o'clock. And then on the Saturday, at 9 o'clock at Willow Lawn, we place flags there. The, the public is always welcome to help, help us place flags. We've always gotten a good 10, 12 people out there. So it's a good way to kind of give back as well. Then on Monday, we have our three ceremonies. First one is the Vernon Township. That's at 9 o'clock. Have a rifle squad and bugles. And then we have a 10 o'clock at Willow Lawn, followed by 11 o'clock at Arbor Theater. We're following that memorial ceremony. We'll have a dedication for the plaque that we had placed there. That's what we have for this Memorial Weekend. Any questions? Recovered, John? John, good deal.
No, thank you. And it was at last year's event that several of us began talking and realizing that we had never formally dedicated that. And, you know, I mean, never memorialized the dedication of it so that anybody who was visiting it could, could come up with it. So many thanks to staff for following up on this and, and getting it done. I think it's a great, a great plaque.
Looks good. And as you touched on earlier, it's come up with great ideas, but it's Public Works to get it to done. So thank you again for that. Appreciate it.
This is a perfect example of that, yeah.
Yes.
So Todd, I wanted to ask you, and you mentioned at the last meeting, what is our policy for the banner program? Who's, who's eligible to be on the banner?
So you have to live in, in the community. You've gone to school here, have served or are serving.
Okay. So I think we should amend that. I would like to, to say that there are certain members of the community, namely police officers and members of, of the village staff who certainly are deserving of that honor. And even though they don't physically live here, they definitely call this place home. So one in particular who is especially instrumental in that banner program, of course, Mr. Petrillo, who served in the military himself and would never, would never mention the fact that he might be deserving of it. But, but John, you certainly are. So I would, I would like to ask you to amend the policy to include, include members of the, the police force and other, other members of, of village staff.
You actually beat me to it. I was going to come back another night. So you saved, saved, saved me a night. But yeah, I agree that next year, I think we should put the, the policemen, firemen, all the first responders and such that, whether you want to send it to those that, those that served or that are, served in the military, first responders now. But it's, it'd be your discretion.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, that, that's something that we'd have to, to, to think about. We certainly do, do want to honor first responders in every way, but I don't want to diminish the, the military aspect of it as well. So.
There's, there's a good note because we've had others times that people were out of town, couldn't make it. So we've had the, the police and firemen that have served.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but that would be the thing, first responders who have also served in the military.
Certainly the ones who also.
Yeah, definitely. Without a doubt.
Right, the ones who served.
And, and, you know, staff, because we've already got, Lisa's got one up there. She's former staff.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. So yeah, we didn't want to do it all in one, one, one year. Want to have some excitement next year. We're, we're right with you, trustee.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate that very much. And I know that there's other members in the Police Department who are also, you know, quietly serve here, that served in combat, including Afghanistan and Iraq. And while they're not residents, they're going to be very touched by that gesture. So behalf of everybody who, who serves the village but doesn't physically live here, thank you. We appreciate that.
I think we should put John at the very front of the street. The spotlight on it.
Yes.
Blinking light. That's a great idea. I'm all for it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and with this Veterans Memorial there, just a small piece of history, the, the main reason that's there, we, we decided when we got that 160-some acres, when they did the base closings during the Clinton administration, that was the former site of a Nike missile. In, in fact, in World War II, it was a, an airbase called the Liberty Ville Naval Air Base. And then in the 50s, and that was a Nike, an actual Nike missile site. And there were actual silos still there when we first got the land and were creating an athletic place. So we set aside a portion of it, especially up where it was the, the best portion we could actually have that Veterans Memorial. We even tried to get a, found a guy out in San Francisco who had several Nike missiles. But the cost of buying one and transporting it from San Francisco to here was astronomical. So we went with what we've got. So.
And I believe too, I did see a letter going back that for the Nike site, for the missiles, this was a great area to put it because there was no people around.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Nobody else has a speaking part? Okay. So then we're onto omnibus vote agenda, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve items A through J on the omnibus vote agenda? Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Comments, questions, concerns?
I got one quick comment for finance. I can't tell if it's in the omnibus or not, but I noticed on the paid warrant, like you have impact fees to the schools. Can you expand on what that is or what that's for?
So the impact fees are collected from developers who develop in the community over time and then we disperse them. We haven't dispersed them for about a year. So we're catching up a little bit.
Why, why have they been taken so long?
I think we, I, I think there was an influx of development a couple of years ago and the, just the amounts were a lot, significantly less. So we didn't pay them out quarterly. We went to semiannually. And we're just, just a little behind that right now.
And, and then the one for the park district, is that the, for the spray park?
The $400,000?
It's marked as, what says park donation, $117,000.
That's impact fees.
That's still impact fees too. So they get significantly a lot more than the, the schools, I noticed.
I, I believe the park district overlaps the village in greater ways than each park, than each school district does. School districts might be different portions of the village.
Well, just like a reference, so like if you look at the camera, I thought I saw about 70, like, because you, there's even Stevenson and Lincolnshire schools are getting impact. impact fees, too. And it just doesn't seem proportional to the amount of neighborhoods that go to Stevenson Schools versus Vernon Hills Schools. I'm just kind of curious what the formula is for impact fees and how that's determined.
I can get that detail for you.
Okay.
I don't have that on hand right now.
Okay, I just want to make sure the correct schools are getting the correct amounts. The schools are getting the correct amounts, and somebody's not.
So we, the impact fees by the code are one aspect of it, then we have redevelopment agreements that may spell out impact fees that may deviate slightly from the code. The, some of the impact fees that I think we collected, there's a redevelopment agreement that had the timing of those impact fees was supposed to be at certificate of occupancy, for example, and so we may have received them early and not dispersed them. We've had, obviously, turnover in our staff, so that's just my best guess as to what may have happened.
Well, and isn't there a, there is a, it depends upon the type of project, the size of the project, the dollar value of the project, there are a lot of variables.
And where the project is.
Yeah.
And we have a table that we can distribute with our next.
Yeah, I'd like, I mean, I can always come in and see a deep dive on that. I'm just curious on that, because I think that, is that something you want to revisit? Because who determines, obviously, there's, we follow a code, and then, as you said, the developers make deals with, side deals, it sounds like, with the school districts or whoever these party, the levying parties are?
So the code, some of them are derived from a cash equivalent of land based on a certain acreage of land, depending on the type of development. So you end up with a cash contribution that's equivalent to that land value at the fair market value of the time the code was last updated. Then we have other, the school district contributions use a population projection based on the type of unit that determines how many students of a certain age between, you know, preschool all the way up to high school. So there's a projection of population based on the type, the distribution of units, so two-bedroom attached units.
No, I understand. Who decides that model?
That, the, I can double-check this, but the formula of projection, there's a single company that actually I think everybody uses.
Well, isn't the base formula still based on the old Naperville formula that was?
Yes.
That was, because there had been some fights in court about paying impact fees, and everybody agreed on, many years ago, about the Naperville formula, as to how many bedrooms cost of the home and stuff like that. And then we have historically always gotten more than the base formula, like we did with the mall and that.
From the developer for the.
Yeah.
It's our ordinance. We set it by ordinance, but everybody did follow the Naperville formula, and the key was that an impact fee had to be uniquely attributable, those were the key words, to the development, and that's what came out of that court case. But it is our ordinance, and we can revisit it and tweak it if we want to, but again, we have to be sure that we're following this uniquely attributable standard, so there's some room, some.
And these are one-time fees, then? Usually, like, when they do make a development, there's a one-time.
At the beginning of the development.
Yeah, because I recall, I remember during the referendum stuff, that conversation came up with the Naperville model, and then the question is, is, are they attributing the correct number per household of students that are going to impact, say, the school districts? I'm just kind of curious if that's changed at all, if it's something worth revisiting. But it just caught my eye today, and thank you for speaking on it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, a second, on the omnibus, A through J. Roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, no unfinished additional business, correct? New business or communication, anybody from the board have anything?
Yeah, I have some. I spoke to Sue Gandhi, she called me the other day. She just wanted to thank the board and the village for the generous donation for her this year, so she really appreciates it.
Yeah, she does good work.
Yeah, she's, I mean, she's headed, I mean, her head count's probably up to 20% from last year, so. But there's a lot of people in this community that has helped her out, including, I want to recognize Whole Foods, they give her, they provide her a delivery every Monday morning at 9:30, so just want to give them a shout.
I was talking to Superintendent of 73, and the, usually when they look at numbers, enrollment of the free and reduced lunch families, there's a lot more, it's up.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm glad that we were able to help them, help out. I just like, want to give a shout to Vernon Hills. I was at V-HAC where the baseball cluster is the other day, and there is a brand-new AED right there for, hopefully, nobody's usage, but there if needed. So really appreciate you guys for getting that up there quick and for the summer season. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, any other new business communications on the board?
You know, I got a comment. You know, pertaining to, like, the Park District donations and such, for every 100 people, their formula gives them about $190,000. Say if we're going to build something, and it's going to generate, you know, about 100 people, we're going to get $190,000. So I'm sure it's, but it's based on the price of land. So if we put something at 500, 500 people, let's say, they should get a large donation, and it's based on an acre of land worth $190,000, which is probably conservative compared to, you know, when we established that. That's why they get so much more money.
Well, and the Park District covers the entire village, whereas we have, what, three or four elementary schools and two high schools that share parts of the village, so. Okay, anything else on the board, then?
Yeah, we had some citizens that were wishing to address the board.
Okay, that missed the citizens wishing to address the board earlier, yes, come on up.
Honorable Village President, Mr. Byrne, respected board members, trustees, village staff and residents, namaste, everybody, good evening. I am Manirutha Bhideh, here to talk about a great event that occurred last week. Hindu Swam Sevak Sangha USA is a 501(c)(3) voluntary nonprofit social, educational and cultural organization. HSS aims to coordinate the Hindu-American community to practice, preserve and advance ideals and values of Hindu Dharma. HSS conducts regular value-based education programs for children, youth and adults through more than 230 chapters nationwide, eight chapters in the greater Chicago area, including one in the village of Buffalo Grove. Teacher appreciation week is celebrated in the U.S. in the first week of May. To celebrate this, HSS has been honoring teachers in a Hindu tradition, calling it Guru Vandana, for over 18 years across the U.S. Guru in Sanskrit means teacher, spiritual master and mentor. Vandana means salutations. It is an expression of love, gratitude and reverence towards the teacher. Guru Vandana is an ancient tradition in India, which is still practiced even today. The ceremony includes honoring teachers in a traditional Hindu way. It is a great opportunity for teachers to experience Hindu culture through traditional dance and music and recitation of Hindu scriptures, which glorify gurus and teachers. Teachers often find the experience exhilarating as well as emotional. On May 7, HSS Buffalo Grove was joined by multiple Hindu community organizations, honoring a total of 85 educators from 13 school districts, 24 schools, including two school superintendents, five school principals and two school board presidents from Lake County, with a total attendance of around 400 people. We had participation from our local school districts, number 73 and 128. In 2022 alone, across the country, Guru Vandana has been celebrated in 71 cities across 23 states, with around 3,000 teachers being honored from 62 school districts and a total participation of over 7,000 people. We thank the board for this opportunity to talk about the great event that we had in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anything else from the board of that on the meeting? Okay, in that case, entertain a motion to adjourn, we can do the other motion at the end. Okay. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn the village board meeting?
Motion to adjourn the village board meeting.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No one opposed, all right. Back to the mayor.
Okay, we like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. First item is to appoint trustee.
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be chairman pro tem for the duration of the committee of the whole meeting.
Second that.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Shenk.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Okay. First item of business is approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of May 2, 2023. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Epstein.
Trustee Schenk.
Epstein.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Only item on the agenda tonight, the municipal code amendments, Parkway Maintenance and Obligation Concept Discussion.
Thank you. Director Vanada and I were talking not long after he started with us about this particular section. We had a resident who had requested assistance with the driveway apron, and we were digging through the code and could not find a clear obligation of the private property owners to maintain the private improvements that are located in public right-of-way. Around the same time, we started gearing up for grass and weed season and commute development, and recognized that our, the sections that, if it were to come to actual citation, the sections that we would cite people for, for failure to maintain vegetation in the Parkway also weren't particularly clear. So that brings us to the memo for tonight. What we decided was that we would go ahead and propose an amendment to do two different chapters of the code that would address this issue, both for vegetation and for improvements like driveway aprons and service walks and carriage walks. So as described in the memo, there would be an update to Chapter 20, which is the Street Sidewalks and Other Public Places chapter, to clearly define an obligation to maintain that area, both in terms of vegetation for the Property Maintenance Code standards and driveway aprons, service walks, carriage walks, per the standards of the Development Ordinance. So that's the first piece. And then the second piece is the nuisance section. Nuisance section does have some language. I found it to be somewhat confusing myself, so the idea here with the nuisance section is to take the section that already exists and just revise it slightly, so that the obligation is very clear, not just with open land areas, but with developed property, that you have an obligation to maintain the Parkway area abutting your property, keep the vegetation mode, whether it's open land or not open land. It was oddly clearer for open land than it was for developed land, so those are the two sections that we're recommending. Happy to answer any questions that you might have, and hopefully, if the consensus is to prepare an ordinance, we would come back soon, since we're in the vegetation season.
Yeah, my question was, where does the line get drawn? Now, you're not just talking about easements, you're also talking about.
It is the right-of-way and public.
Right-of-way.
Yes.
My question would be, where, you know, where does the line actually?
So it is the area, it's the property line, it's from the property line to the back of the curb, so it's the entire Parkway area, the, from that property line out.
Okay.
Is that spelled out? I mean, I'm looking at the, like, your proposal here. Is that spelled out somewhere else that they're responsible from the property line with, I guess, to the back of the curb? Am I just not reading it correctly?
I think it's a defined area elsewhere in the code, but let me just.
It's defined, like, public right-of-way is defined somewhere, right?
Yeah, if they're to maintain the portion of the public rights of where public access easements are described here, and so, yeah, it is a definition, we can certainly point to it.
Yeah.
If that definition has the section, I can certainly insert it.
So this is for people who, like, if they're not mowing their lawn, correct? What is our ordinance right now? Where, how high is it?
10 inches.
Is it 10 inches before?
It's six.
Six inches?
So it's a property maintenance, there's a, the way the Property Maintenance Code is written, each town can insert, when they adopt the International Property Maintenance Code, you can insert your vegetation limit. We use a six inch.
And so if, say, there's a home that is not abiding by that, and then I'm sure a letter or call or something is sent before enforcement, and then is, what happens then? What, like, what's the process if somebody just keeps pushing it down the road?
So for grass in particular, there's a, there's actually a village abatement of grass, so it proceeds from a tag pretty rapidly, actually, per state statute, we're allowed to do a nuisance abatement, mow, as long as we follow our reasonable notice, which is typically 14 days. So you could give somebody a seven day, and then another seven day at the end of that, you could mow it.
And then, so we mow it and then put, and then find them the cost.
Invoice them for it and then lien it if they don't pay it.
And then, what is the, what's the ordinance on parking on your grass as, like, instead of your driveway? Private property?
It is, you are supposed to park on the driveway. Since you bring it up, it's actually not particularly clear. It's another aspect of the nuisance ordinance that I think could be, could be clearer.
But, but back to what's at hand here, he's talking about the right-of-way or the area between the sidewalk and where the street is, that, isn't that, that's correct?
That's correct.
I sometimes, you sometimes see corner homes with fences, and they mow their lawn.
They're inside, but not the outside.
But they're not going the outside of the fence, which would kind of be, that's why I was asking if you spell out that area that they would have to mow specifically. So obviously, there's a definition, I'm sure somewhere buried in here that defines that. You just have to reference it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to reference that.
Because that's, that's what they'll say, like, well, you know, it's, you know, how that works.
Yeah, to make it clear, it would be defined by property line to back of curb.
Right.
Yeah. Other comments, questions from the board? What do you need from, is that, do you need anything further from us, or?
Just looking for a consensus to turn this into a, an ordinance that would amend these sections with the actual, additional direction to make sure that we clearly reference the definition of Parkway.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Do HOAs supersede this? We supersede HOA rules on this, right? Given HOA has this rule, I mean, we supersede it. If they say eight inches and we're six inches, right, we supersede?
Yes. We would control.
Okay. And I believe in the multifamily HOAs, their landscaping people do, do out to the curb, but I can check.
Yes.
Yeah, mostly.
They should include that in their contracts, yes.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on this? Okay.
Move to adjourn to go to closed session?
Or.
Or.
Yeah, we have for litigation, lease of property, personnel and approval of minutes.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned, and we will not be conducting any business after a closed session.